And. And do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. To the republic. For which stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Justice for all.
Okay. All right, public speak. Do we have anyone here for public speak?
Yes, I had a question if I might.
Certainly.
In. In the June referendum, we had these advisory questions. And one of the questions was concerned with. Splitting the Andover Elementary School budget in the town budget to be voted on. Each independently. And I was wondering if based on the results of that. Question. We should expect that to happen next time around.
I do not know the answer to that question because that would be Board of Selectmen would have to weigh in. And is that a charter change, Eric? I don't know.
That does require a charter change.
Okay.
And so the Board of Selectmen asked that question because they they're anticipating. Another Charter Advisory Commission to be seated sometime soon. And they wanted that information to give them some direction.
Okay, sounds good. That's that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Nobody else? Public speak? I don't see anybody. All right, let's move. Do we have any additions or deletions that we want to add to the? Agenda? Kay, Kay? Does anybody have anything? I have nothing. No?
I'll say.
I mean, the only thing, I apologize, guys, I was online at work until about an hour ago and then I needed to get dinner, but. Do we have anything on there for CIP? Liaison?
For CIP?
Yeah.
Ten liaison reports.
There, that will we'll address it then. That works, that's fine.
That works, okay. All right, thanks, Rob. Anything else?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Am I allowed to comment on the public speak? Issue?
If you have a question, yeah, I mean.
I just want to say one thing, I just think it would totally complicate our town even worse. I think that somehow we all have to, I understand the theory. But I'm hoping that last year's situation and things going forward, maybe preparing ahead of time. Just might. Do better and try to come together as a town to. You know, I just feel like it's gonna be okay, we got a 1% over here, we got a 4%, I don't know, it might complicate it, but it's for another, we've got a long time. Thank you.
Eric?
Diane, can I suggest that you put under new business affordable housing plan?
Okay. That be eight H?
Yep.
Affordable. Yeah, okay, can I have a motion for that?
I'll move to add eight H affordable housing plan to the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kurt, seconds? Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, okay, added. All right, anything else, guys, you want to add or delete? You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Town administrators' report.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Certainly.
Amanda, I need the power. Okay. Hopefully, we're all looking at a shared screen which says administrators' report. Except it should say Board of Finance, not Board of Selectmen, sorry. Okay, so, things that are relevant to the Board of Finance, the first is the Assessor's. Office is on track to finalize the rebell in October. Which will probably fairly dramatically affect the grand list. It doesn't increase the amount of money we get, it just means the overall grand list. Will be higher. So the other thing I wanted to make you guys aware of is that. The Mateo, who was the person who had taken the combined position. Well, was made to take the combined position of the. Assistant Town Clerk and the Building Admin has resigned. And taken another municipal job with Coventry. So the Board of Selectmen at their last meeting. Made a decision to split those positions back again because of all the problems we had had with that. Office, so we're advertising for them both separately. And we will go from there. Permit link is live.
Good question, before you move on from that, so that has a financial impact to the budget because we have. A position that we didn't budget for, correct?
That's correct, and well, it's got two implications, the first is. Mateo was taking a partial payment in lieu of healthcare. And since these are both union positions. It is unlikely that we're not going to end up with. You know, a significant change in the amount of benefits. Associated with these positions. So that's where that's where it becomes a Board of Finance. Issue. You know.
Eric, are we back to the same hours previous to combining it for each position?
No, the board is trying to run the. The Building Department right at 20 hours. So, you know, which is 14 hours less than it was previously.
And then set hours so that the town people will know, right? I mean, maybe you had that with the combined position too.
I mean, we did, but it's. It's been ugly, and frankly, I would not be at all surprised if Bolton. Refuses to sign another contract to provide building official services. Because they're obviously really unhappy with us.
Why? Is it is it only working in an office? Is it the amount of work is so huge that one person just can't do it in those amount of hours?
Uh, there's a fair amount of work to that office. The other real problem is that. You know, when you have. A late building and land combined building and land use office. Where everyone is part-time, the building official part-time, zoning officials part-time, wetlands, part-time, fire marshal. Is a few hours a week, when all those people are barely there. You know, the the admin provides the gatekeeper that's always there to answer questions. And now, when you say roughly half the time the building is open, there's nobody there to answer questions. Two things happen, one, people get frustrated and they call the Bolton Land Use Office directly. Because they know our building official, you know, is in the, and their. Admin is quite unhappy to spend lots of time dealing with Andover's problems. Which makes everybody in Bolton unhappy, or they call the building official. For questions that really should be addressed by the admin and the building official shouldn't directly be engaged, and when you only. Are contracting for five hours a week of building official services. That becomes kind of problematic in and of itself, so.
As a good administrative assistant in a department. I would have a folder with listed questions for those five hours that you can. You know, you got a doc, I'm not saying it's a perfect world, I totally hear what you're saying. I have to deal in my own capacity with people that I might see an hour a week, I have that folder, I've got it ready. But I know what you're saying, that the people want the questions. I, so that's, if Mateo or the person was working 20 hours and had all those things lined up. And then you're go week to week, or maybe the building official or whoever. Has how many hours dedicated to Andover from Bolton?
Five.
I know that's not a heck of a lot of time to do, I love real estate, so it's not a lot of time to do permits and checking and. You know, what, so I imagine a lot of the work is doing that stuff, site work too. Yeah, I would just hope that, I get that it's not easy. But maybe. A little organization and having the questions all ready for it, so that at least week to week. The most time someone would have to wait for an answer is. A week, I don't know if that's reasonable or is that crazy too? In the building world.
But, I mean, there's so many variations on questions. You know, that. I think it's unreasonable to expect. Somebody else to cover that position and be able to understand. You know, what most of the questions are, and frankly, you know, it's pretty obvious that whoever takes that position. It's gonna take them a long time. To get up to speed, because there's a, there's an enormous amount to know.
Yeah, and if you if you don't like it, like someone like me, I'm just saying, I get that she can't answer, or, you know, the person can't answer it. Just have those questions ready for when the skilled person comes in. You know, you could just go through them, get the answers, get back to the person. I'm not, it's, that's how I organize my time, I have like a staff of 150 that come at me, and let me tell you, teachers with COVID. And extra pay for this or this, you just have to really. Get your questions ready, get the official that's gonna answer them, and then get back to the people all week. So that's my world right now with COVID, but. That's just a thought, thank you, I don't want to. Stall us. And then, how many hours will the Assistant Town Clerk be?
Probably 26 again.
And didn't you already bargain a position in the union to combine it, so now it has to be split apart again, or no?
Well, number one, we never originally. You know, one, the union never agreed to it, so we never did formalize that. We formalized what a combined position would make in terms of hourly wage. But they have never agreed to combine that. We just did it because frankly, they weren't, you know, playing ball with us, period. So, you know, we're kind of back to where we were, other than we're advertising this as a 20-hour-a-week position instead of a 30. Or 34-hour-a-week position.
Eric?
Yep.
Have you run all this past or through the Board of Selectmen, because I think that's an issue that they need to. To deal with?
So I gave the Board of Selectmen a series of options. And Cherry gave them the cost basis for what those options would be and what the cost would be for the town.
And what what came out of that?
Uh, exactly what I told you, their decision was to have me split the position. Go back to a standalone position for the Town Clerk and a separate one for the Building Department.
Great.
And benefits for that, is there, I forget when you earn benefits, you know, with the whole. The retirement and all that, is it 25 now? Did you up that?
No, those positions both will have benefits.
So on top of the salary, it'll be the, what's the name, I'm sorry, I've had a long day, what's the name of the retirement program the town has again, I talked to it last week, I just can't think of it.
The town is. In Murph.
Gotcha, so the 14 or 15% that the town on each of those. On top, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know. I mean, one of the issues we've had is as we've cut all this stuff. You know, nobody stays anymore.
Yeah.
You know, we're on our third, you know. Or second admin, you know, both admins have left within a year's timeframe. You know, after the one before that. You know, who had a little better package stayed for 20 something years and is now back working as for the town temporarily filling in. You know, we haven't been able to keep Assistant Town Clerks any either, because frankly, everybody else pays them a lot better. So they worked for us for a short period of time, gained a little experience at both, and that's exactly what Mateo did.
Yep, it's life, life situations too, you're gonna get a lot of, you know, I cut my hours in half when I was a young mom and had three kids at home. That was my priority, it depends, it could be. Great for someone, but I get you, you're not gonna get people that are gonna join on and stay forever, it's just people's life circumstances, that's all.
Yep, understood.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are doing tree work, right now, we're doing quite a bit of tree work over. On the northern half of of the town. We were fortunate that we. Were able to make a deal with Eversource with the utility company. And they basically agreed to allow us to cut on both sides of the road. And they're paying for half the cost of all the tree trimming and removal. So that's allowed us to stretch our dollars a lot more. That's been kind of a long-running thing I've been trying to get. You know, and and it seems like we finally got to the right people at Eversource. Who are willing to consider some things like this, so, so that's been going fairly fairly well. As you know, we put aside. Money in the Treework Permanent Fund. This particular. Iteration of tree work, we're gonna expend somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000. And the utility company will put in that, or maybe even a little bit more than that. So that's been going fairly well.
We only put $50,000 in there for this fiscal year.
Correct. Correct, we have to leave some for emergency stuff.
Right, right.
So. There's no real report on snow plowing at this point, but we did have an issue with our contract for salt. So there's. The Connecticut is gonna have a real problem with salt this year. Because one of the main distribution points was in New London where they were able to barge the salt in. And New London has closed that facility and turned it over to an offshore wind conglomerate. So salt is either coming in from, you know, now New Haven or south of New Haven or somewhere in Rhode Island. So there's a lot less supply available, and one company has basically. Bought out all the distribution kind of in the Northeast. We did sign a contract very early. With, in that contract specified that if the CROG bid. Came in lower than what we had locked in at. We would be able to, they would honor the CROG bid. Unfortunately, they were one of the companies that were bought out, the company that bought them out. Apparently bought their their salt stockpile and didn't really buy anything else from them, so they have told us they will not honor it. We have been able to get back in on the state bid for salt. So it looks like we're going to be okay, probably, but this is gonna be a real issue going forward. In years. The good news is we have a really good stockpile of salt. So, you know, we may be able to get away with only purchasing, say, 300 tons this year. You know, if we start having supply issues, not ideal, but, you know, that is life. Uh, so as you all know, we sent out and got back the RFPs for the community center. The. The committee approved hiring the BSC group for the excavation and site work. For $23,000. And Moser Pylon Nelson Architects for the Architectural Report, part $6,000. So I sent the the details to the town's attorney and asked him to write up a contract. He got a contract back to me. This morning for the excavation site work. And he basically said the architectural bid. Was a low enough dollar amount, he said, just sign the the bid document they gave you and you'll be fine, so. Presuming the Board of Finance has no objection, my plan was to sign that tomorrow and get both of those off. And running.
Oh, let me ask that question. Because you sent me that lovely purchasing policy. If it's, so we don't need a formal contract, it was between 5 and 15,000. Okay. That's how I'm reading that.
Right. That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
Um, Eric, before we go any further on the salt budget thing.
Yep.
My question would be, so we signed a contract with somebody for kind of a price protection. Contract. They get bought out and now won't honor the contract. What sort of dollar amount? Are we talking about here? Because I'm just thinking whether there's any purpose here in trying to. Trying to enforce something, if it's a small amount of money, it's not worth pursuing.
Um. You know, who knows where salt prices are going to end up? At this point, it seems like we're. Going to be, they will accept us under the state bid contract, so we're gonna be paying roughly what we paid. We would have paid had we had a standalone contract, maybe a tiny little bit more, but not enough to to worry about.
Okay.
You know, what the company, the original agreement was to lock us in at about 70, I think $75 a ton. And the company that bought them, they didn't actually buy them out, according to them. All they did, the only thing they agreed to do was buy their salt stockpile. But since they can essentially prevent the other company. From importing salt, because they now no longer have a way to do it, because they control all the importation. They essentially took over their client, or they took over their stuff because the other company has no way to get product.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this, but it doesn't necessarily relieve the seller of its contract. You know, if it's a straight asset purchase and they only purchased the stockpiles, I get that, but then the company that made the agreement with us still exists. Still has assets or whatever. That doesn't necessarily just mean they get to walk away and stiff us. Now, if it's a small amount of money, it doesn't make any sense to pursue them, I understand that, but I'm a little. I don't want to just. Hand-wave this away, because typically, when you have, like, this is, this apparently what you're telling me is that this isn't a corporate succession ship issue. Where they actually completely bought out the company, the other company still exists, right? Still in going concern?
No, I. They're they're done. I mean.
So.
They have no product.
Yeah, okay, so they sold. Yeah, somehow they sold their assets but not their liabilities, yeah, I'm not sure that flies, but, okay. That bothers me, sorry, this is the insurance guy in me. I don't love that, but if it's not a huge amount of money and it's not worth pursuing, fine, I just. It doesn't strike me as the right answer, but, okay.
Well. And Rob, you know this, and, you know, because contracts are contracts, but if the company was acquired, then they would have to, you know. Most contracts aren't assignable, so they're not gonna go, you know, so the thing is, we don't know what the legal status is of the company is.
Right, whether they're actually dissolved or what.
Right, I get what you're saying.
That's what I'm bringing up, now, I deal with corporate succession ship issues in a very different context. And and this is exactly the sort of thing that we get stuck on a fair bit in my job. You know, who actually has the rights and who actually has the responsibilities, but. This is a massive rabbit hole and I don't want to go down any further, so let's move on.
Yeah, I'm happy to give you the information if you want to sue them.
Yeah, I am not legal counsel, so let's just. Don't listen to me. I I just, bug me and it struck me as the wrong answer, but hey, again, let's move on.
Sure, okay, so I'm not going over everything on here, just so that you know, in the interest of time. So. We got our our essentially full approval for the steep grant for, that will cover the cost, half the cost of reclaiming. A couple of roads. We're not gonna get to it this year because we're way too far behind on drainage work and we gotta finish, complete the drainage work. On shoddy mill before we do it, because we have to do both roads at once, but the good news is. At least they finally fully approved the the funding for the steep grant, so we know the money is there when we get around to doing it. The connectivity grant, we finally got the official notice to proceed from Department of Transportation. Project Authorization List. And they wrote us a check for $297,000. So we have the money, I'm still bugging the. The construction company as to when the actual start date is. But it sounds like it's gonna be fairly soon, they're trying to wrap up other projects right now. Before they started on it, so hopefully we'll get the significant portion of that completed this fall.
Remind me, Eric, what's included in that connectivity, what is the, what's the work they're gonna be doing?
Okay. Say again?
Is it sidewalks?
It's it's a, it's a series of connected things.
Okay.
So the idea was, we got the DOT separately to install a new. Crosswalk across Long Hill Road at Route 6. And then we're tying it in with sidewalks, running down to the bridge towards the ball field. And then improving the other side connecting to the rail trail, making a new. Trailhead there. Installing a kiosk. New stairs at the library. New handicapped accessible ramp and railing at the library. Connection to the. And connection to the Andover Church there. So it's basically, the goal is to make an easy pedestrian and cycling connection now between. You know, the north side and the south side at Long Hill, between the ball field and the rail trail and other town assets.
I would love them to have a flashing stop ahead. Sign when you're coming up to Long Hill there, because a corner is just. The light changes, you don't see it.
Well, we did at least get the DOT to do a lot of cutting there. So they did push the brush back a lot, and the light is still screwed up there. You know, which is not good, because they, the the new crossing and the new traffic lights are keyed on cameras. Not on underground sensors, you know, underground magnetic sensors, which is kind of the way they're all going to. But the company that's got that project is a little over a year behind, I mean, this was supposed to be completed last. It was supposed to be done by October 1 of last year. And they still haven't finished the bloody thing, so, so that's a little annoying. But, you know, that's the state's problem more than it is our problem, because that's not part of our grant, that was another project we got the state to do for us.
Okay.
So as far as townwide monitoring. As most of you know, we had to switch from monitoring by our Talend Dispatch Center to our own standalone company. Not our own company, but a commercial company. So we did that, you know, we we made a decision who we went with, that transition took place by July 1. And then we've been going all around and getting all the buildings inspected and then brought back up to code. There were some, a number of problems identified. The worst ones were in Public Works, which we already knew, and then also the Town Hall had a bunch of things that were pretty bad. Like all the heat sensors in the furnace room and in the attic here. Were never wired. Um, were never wired correctly, so they never worked. Um, you know, they all failed the initial test, they just didn't go off. And then when they went back and traced it, um, they determined the sensor itself was okay, but they were incorrectly wired. Um, so the Town Hall is not that expensive, a set of fix. And I already cleared that work with the Fire Marshal, um, to make sure he was okay with, you know, what they were doing there. Um, and then Public Works, that's gonna be about eighty-five or eighty-eight hundred dollars. But it's less than the Board of Selectmen and you as the Board of Finance agreed to, um, when we, when you. Signed off on the whole proposal back in July, so. Um, they were originally saying if they had to replace everything, you know, it was gonna be in the twelve to fourteen thousand dollar range. And so what we decided on doing was just inspect everything first. And then let's bring it up to code and let's replace just what's physically failing or not code compliant. So that's basically what we're doing. Um, next thing up, uh, we talked a number of times with the Board of Finance about the Affordable Housing Grant. Um, we did get an Affordable Housing Grant from the State PUD. Uh, or some other entity of the state. Um, and we did an RFP for that, we got three bids backed for it. And the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission accepted the bid from Bill Warner. As the lowest cost acceptable bid. Um, and I think the reason Bill was able to provide this. At a lower cost was because A, he wrote our last plan of conservation and development. You know, and B, uh, he he won the bid for the last Affordable Housing Grant. Uh, that we got um, about ten years ago, so he was basically starting with mo- a significant fraction of the data. Uh, so I'm informing you this, my intention is just to announce the bid acceptance. And, you know, write a contract with Mr. Warner unless you all as a board have an issue with it. Or wanna discuss it in some form or another.
I don't have an issue, anybody have any issue?
No issue, and it's been talked uh, talked about for a number of meetings, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I think I've already told you this, or Sherry already told you this. But we did get our first crunch of the American Recovery Act funding for four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, of which you've agreed to spend around twelve hundred dollars by writing a check to the help district. But other than that, so you have basically four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of that still in the. In the kitty. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk to you about that's. You're going to see coming up is that. Uh, we had, the the board had already had asked me to. Uh, instead of directly doing the electrical work that we needed in the Town Hall to send that to RFP. Um, as soon as I prepared the RFP, that set off a little bit of an argument within the Board of Selectmen about scope of work. Um, partly because there's a fairly significant um, code violation in our mechanical room. And that when they did the addition for the community room, they ran the fill lines for the new oil tank directly over the electrical panel. Which is clearly a code violation. Um, I'm not saying our. Uh, because what we were going to add to the system would have not been directly under it. We probably could have done it, but the Board of Selectmen did not feel comfortable, you know, continuing something that that was that bad a. A code violation. The problem is, is that that led to mission creep and. If we replace that, then really, the uh, there's a couple of other things we really ought to do at the same time. Because if we're redoing all the piping, the only way we can do redo the piping is to go through an existing window. Uh, area that was already turned into a vent, so we're gonna have to block that off. And there's gonna be a number of other things, so it's it's gone from a simple project to a complicated, more complicated project. That's gonna result in us replacing our oil storage tank, our fill pipes, doing a little work on the HVAC, which we know we've needed to do. Um, you know, and some, you know, some masonry. So the board has also asked me to uh, apply for low SIP funds to pay for that upgrades. And we have plenty of money uh, available in our low SIP account, so we should be able to pay for that. Uh, strictly with low SIP funds and not touch the building maintenance funds. Um, to do that, makes it a lot more complicated project with a lot more moving parts. But, um, and it's gonna push the time we do it out a little bit, but uh. You know, that's that's kind of the plan at this point. Does any, do any of you have any questions, you know, about what we're doing or why?
Oh, I listened to that meeting, so it was a lively meeting.
They usually are.
Also, also Eric, you ran you ran it through uh, Captain Proments the last Thursday. And personally, I I think the the amount of the uh, for the entire project is not. Really crazy or out of the ordinary. Um, and as they I think we all stated, you know, the town needs to meet code with that upgrade. You might as well complete the upgrade while we're doing it, so. Yet see some hard hard facts and figures, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm working on providing. Uh, okay, so that's everything I have, other than I do have the the stuff. Um, and we can go into it, I'll unshare my screen and then share it again. When we get to the discussion for CIP, the excavator and the other stuff. Um, and that's it for me, unless you have other questions for me.
Anybody have any other questions for Eric before we go over to Sherry? No, okay, Sherry, you're up.
Okay, good evening. In your packets, you have um, several reports. Um, I submitted to you the town budget summary from last fiscal year, twenty twenty-one. And the revenue summary from last fiscal year as well. And the TAR spending account in detail, that's where we are at with all three of those reports. I expect that the budget summary report will reflect two more adjustments. We have uh, two things to pay before September thirtieth, and then that should be officially closed out at that time. I'm also working on reconciling the town with the Board of Ed. And I'm coming up with a final total as far as the PO encumbrances that we still need to. Um, do, um, and pay out. Um, so. I'm I'm working on that and there's some adjustments to that, but it's not gonna be uh, earth shattering, it should be fine. Um, and the other thing is, is the second set of reports, well, actually, one set of report. Is your new uh, report for the software system that we put into place. I am working with the programmer, um, there's a final column on that report that should be there. Called percentage used, and it's not there because it places a whole. Dollar amount in there and not a percentage amount like I want them to have. Um, so they're working with the programmer on that. And a couple of the reporting. Um, format issues, um, I want changed and hopefully I'll have them re- rectified by the next uh. Month, and I can give you a full. Uh, report the way it looks like, but pretty much the way you see it now is what it's gonna be like. I think it's user friendly. I added all the accounts that you requested departmental wise for the benefits. Um, so we have those in place. And what I'm adding now is the revenue accounts. And also I'm setting up um, other fund accounts.
And I have a couple of questions. So let's go to the fiscal, last fiscal year end report in there, so right now that report. Was run, I think in the middle of July, third week of July, and it shows that there's a six hundred thousand dollar surplus. So there still are things that have to be.
Paid.
Paid and everything on that.
Yes, and there's a total amount. Um, I'm trying to get the encumbrances down for the board of bed, the, we're receiving invoices right now, I wanna process them. So that what I end up is a total uh, purchase orders that are left to pay. In other words, we're waiting for more invoices to come in, things are backordered. There's certain things that are discontinued, so I'm trying to get a final number for that to book. As far as um, the board of.
Yep.
Then we'll have a final figure.
Okay, so. So last fiscal year, when do you think we're gonna have a basically, put that to bed kind of. Done as an accurate final report?
Some, I'm looking on to have it finished by September thirtieth, which is next week.
Oh, next meeting.
Oh, next meeting that you have. Should be the final report.
Okay.
All right, can I ask her one question to? Just your question, so Sherry, that's unusual, um, with these invoices that are still outstanding. Wh- when were those things ordered?
They were prior to June thirtieth.
Okay.
In May.
Yeah.
A lot of the companies because of COVID, um, don't have a full operational staff back in in. The building, so there'll have been a lot of things that have been discontinued or backorder. Um. Give you a simple, very simple example, we received a kidney table, what is called a kidney table the other day.
I know, yeah, yeah.
And four legs are missing. No, no legs, okay? So we just called the company to kind of rectify that, they're gonna, they apologize because they're using a third party shipping company. And apparently they forgot them on the truck, so I'm still trying to get that issue. Um, rectified hopefully by the end of this week. And then we can uh, put that one to bed, but that's just a very small example of what kind of things that we're dealing.
I face, I face this as well, so I just wanna make sure were these things that were ordered in May. Things that were previously budgeted and not just, you know, extra money left over to be spent. Because it was in the right category and then ordered.
They were ordered in the right category.
Oh, no, I'm sure that, I just mean it was budgeted at the beginning of the year. And it wasn't, we had money left in this account, let's spend it.
Absolutely, it was budgeted earlier.
Okay.
Wasn't a lot of spending going on because we were, you know, taking a look at all the numbers and making sure that we uh. Were well within our budget. Um, so these were items that were scheduled to be ordered in the spring. And they were ordered and we started receiving all the invoices, unfortunately. It's a lot slower than I would like to see happen, so.
Well, I under, yeah, no, I, thank you so much, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't extra spending and it was already planned spending.
Now, it was already planned, definitely, you're welcome.
Now, I have a bunch of questions on the new reporting, okay, so. Wanna make sure.
So you know, it's a preliminary reporting, so I'm still working till the final.
So when I look at this, I see that there's a date at the top corner, September third, twenty twenty-one, it looks like that's the date it was run. Current period is nine one twenty-one to nine thirty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So why doesn't this go back to July is my first question, July one.
Current period, you're reporting on the current period, which is September.
We have closed them up, so to me, we should.
Right, but you have current, you, if you look on the column, it says expenditure current. That gives all the current amounts for September. And then your year-to-date expended is your cumulative, so this report has July, August and September.
So that's kind of.
But what. You put in is your September because you're re- reporting on the month of September and the activity that happened in the. Current column expended. But it kill, it keeps um, adding total cumulative. For the months that you have, now next month, there'll be October, you'll have, you'll see expenditure current. Column with all the October activities.
Current should be the current month we're in.
Yes. Absolutely, yep.
Year-to-date will include everything since beginning.
Includes July, August and September, obviously. So it's a total.
I see that the employee benefit things, accounts have been moved into the department. Areas and there's an adopted budget amount, but there's no expended year-to-date or expended current amount for those. So.
Yeah, we just received our bills. Uh, Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield was late in getting the billing out and we just received uh. All the bills that we had processed, so by the next uh.
We would have social security and Medicare in there, right? We did payroll.
Yeah, um, we have to do. Probably Marina needs to do some journal entries.
Alright, so I'm thinking this is. Budgeted amount in there, but there's no items.
Just remember. She has to do the amounts, social security, yeah. Social Security benefits and Medicare, and then I told her she knows, she now has to. Do an additional entry to break that out departmentalized, so that's what she's working on. To come up with a percentage that she needs to put in all the departments.
Well, that'll correct all that, okay.
Yes, it was, okay, I know she's working on that because she wants it as accurate as it can be.
Okay.
So those um, amounts will be reclassified into their respective department.
Okay, so now I'm on page two and I'm in the tax collector items. And we have negative balance for equipment maintenance. So I'm kinda wanna know what the hell's going on with that.
Equipment maintenance.
So we budgeted eight thousand eight hundred, we expended fourteen-four, and we have a negative fifty-six hundred, so there's an over expense here.
Mm-hmm, I'll have to take a.
Is that, we all, we don't know, okay, so we.
I I can't tell you right now, I don't have the information, but I certainly will take a look at that.
Okay.
And let me know what that is, it may be that. Because these accounts are so new and I gave a chart of accounts to Marina that. You know, we're just trying to get a feel for where things belong. And I might have to reclassify that particular uh, expense, but I, let me take a look at it and I'll let you know.
So let me see my other. Questions on that, um.
Question.
So now I'm on page four and I'm looking at. Payroll service. And we budget sixty-five hundred dollars, do we pay payroll service on an annual basis or is there a monthly amount that we pay for payroll service?
There is a quarterly bill that we receive and we pay it.
Okay, cause nothing's in there year-to-date yet, so I'm just.
They haven't, they have not billed us yet and it usually comes in a quarterly.
Okay. So then, if you look at that line item. We budgeted sixty-five hundred, but our balance is including an extra dollar thirteen, so it's a big amount, but I don't know what.
That's one of those things I'm working on with the programmer.
Okay.
Some reason the reports are not working the way they should be working. And um, he's calling me tomorrow morning and we're gonna make sure that that's correct.
So, so then again, we come into that whole employee benefits thing and I see where the year-to-date's in here. But not all the budget amounts are in there because we put them at the department level, so that's gotta be cleaned up, okay, I'm following this now. Right, five. Let's see. Oh, page seven. Snow removal budget, we have overtime in there for snow removal. Snow removal budget. We have overtime in there for snow removal. It's the summer. We expended year-to-date five thousand one fifty-nine. I'm assuming that's.
Okay.
Is that? That does not look right to me.
No. I don't know if we have. A tree. Or overtime or not. That must be.
Right. But this was just in the snow removal account. We have, we shouldn't have anything expended in there yet.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
That one. Okay, hold on.
That is, and then I'll reclassify it where it should.
We have another negative balance on page eight under the Fire Marshal for sixty dollars. I don't know if it's actually because we didn't. Put the budget amount in.
There's no budget amount there.
Right, but I don't know if that's correct or not. Do you know what I mean? So I can't tell. So there's that. It means there, nothing has been assigned. In the budget column. So let me see if the, I can double check and see what that is.
Diane, I can tell you what that is. Uh, and that may be our issue with budgeting. Because when we, so we added a burning official. Um, but we didn't budget for him. And the reason we didn't budget for them is what we do is we simply pay the burning official. The exact amount the town collects when we issue a burning permit. In other words, he gets paid a fee every time. So he has to go out and do the inspections. But he gets paid only what the person just directly paid the town. Um, so I mean technically, we probably should have had. An anticipated revenue from the burning official and then a line item for the burning official, but we.
So we should account for that re- revenue. We should know how much we're collecting on burning.
Right. I mean, we do. We issue him. Um, we basically pay him whenever. You know, he gives us checks from the people who are requesting burning permits.
But we need some better way so it doesn't look like an over expenditure all the time to deal with that.
Proper way, when I'm setting up the revenue, you'll have a revenue. Sign which will show all that has been collected. In that particular.
Okay, so. Alright, so let's go on to page nine. Top of page nine, there's another negative balance of six hundred eighty-six dollars. I have no idea why. I don't know if that's because we have the adapted budget is not correct or the expanded year-to-date is wrong. So.
That's a dues and fees, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, so that's. Um. On that same page, recreation. Programs Recreation Commission. We have a budget amount of fifty-eight hundred dollars. And two expended items, forty-five hundred hours and ninety-eight hundred dollars. And the balance, that's not even a right balance for those numbers.
Correct. And that's why I told you I'm working with the programmer. There is a problem.
Okay. Alright, so when we get down to the transfer station items. Um, these encumbered P O column items in here. Is that accurate or is that should not be there?
Come or P L?
Yeah, because in other words, we have a budgeted amount. We have a year-to-date.
And then if we have a purchase order.
And then we're adding those back in.
If we encumber. No, actually, it's not working the way it should be.
Okay.
If it was working the way it should be, this minus should be deducting it from.
About.
Year-to-date total. And that means we have a purchase order. That we're starting to do purchase orders now on the town, just like we do on the board of that.
Right.
So we're starting to encumber things and then pay off of them. So. That is one of my areas that I'm having him take a look at.
Okay, so this is all messed up. Okay.
Sheri, has that not been done in the past? The purchase order system on the town?
Not to my knowledge. I have not, I've only been here since March, but I'm told that. It hasn't been. So I'm, I'm trying to.
It's such a good tracker. Yeah.
I'm trying to get a system going so that we're.
Checks and balance, yeah.
Yeah, exactly what we um, we do on the board of that side where we encumber money.
And then on page ten, under the Building Department, there's a wages line that we budgeted for, but there is no year-to-date. Payments out of that. Do we have paid no wages so far this year or to the?
Page ten.
So the wages for the Building Department, the first line, that is the fee for the shared service. For the building official. And again, they, we get billed quarterly. So we have not expended anything for that yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so. These reports need a lot of work.
Yeah. I am absolutely working with the program. I can only do. What the, the company is, is working on and trying to get done. In a very short period of time because I am beating them up on both sides. So.
Good, because um, I'm just getting concerned because we have a very, very tight budget. Um, this year again. And, you know, and we're, you know, we're coming into an, you know, we're gonna go into in a quarter. And we as a board of finance, you know, we have no, no real accurate financial reporting yet that we can kind of look at and make our decisions. So I just want to make sure that that's a priority and that we get some good numbers.
It's a definite priority, but I wanted you to have something rather than nothing. Because I want you to know that it is being set up and it. The chart of accounts is all in place and we're working with the software as far as the. Um, doing counts payable. We're getting purchasing. Uh, inst- um, installed in a system that we can rely upon. The problem is, is the reporting is not what it should be. And I will make sure that it is.
Thank you so much, Sheri. Anybody else have any questions? I know I took up everybody's time. I had time to look at this today, so you know I looked.
Okay, that's fine.
Comment that I think it's really easy to read. So I like the setup. Once it gets, you know, accurate information that Diane, I looked at it also. Just accurate information. I know you're working on it, so that's great. It's new. Um, I, you know, I like the setup of it. Easy to read, having, you know, looked at these things before. So. Yeah, just keep going and thank you for presenting it so we could see what it looks like.
Thank you. On the flip side. Um, uh, last few months, I've been working on reconciling. The town bank statement. And I can honestly say that um, it's reconciled through June 30th. Twenty twenty-one. For the first time since I've been there. Um, so we will have. Um, I will have you, Eric, uh, sign the very last one in June. Uh, approval. And I will be calling the auditor tomorrow. To have him come in and, and let him know that we've reconciled the, the bank statement all the way up to June. And we're ready for him to start working on the audit on both sides.
Yay.
Yeah, I think that's good news. Uh, I was excited.
Job well done, Sheri, you and your assistant.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We've been working hard. It's not perfect, but we're getting there.
It's nice to have a process with the encumbrances, the P Os. I mean, you've got to have that trail. I don't even know how auditors would work in there before if. You know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and one quick question, because you mentioned auditor, so I hope I can comment. Last month. He presented, you know, a nice uh. PowerPoint presentation. Amanda was gonna track it down and share it with us. Um, just so that we'd have it. So he, if he presented and it, you know, there was no hard copy left over. So thank you. If we could get a copy of that.
Alright, you're welcome.
Okay, so. We're on to budget transfers.
I have none.
Okay, so let me ask a question. Since our financial reporting, you know. Is a little in a state of fluffery. How are we managing if there's any over expenditures and where we need to get approvals? By the Board of Finance?
Oh, we just got started. So um. I have a feeling a lot of it, uh, where it is now is just needs to be reclassified to the right account. So I don't believe we have any major over expenditures where we're gonna have to. Get approval on it at this point.
Okay.
I mean, we're on to September. It's only uh, three months. Um. You know, I think we'll, we'll be fine. I'll take a look at all those accounts. I'll work with the programmer. I'll see where we're at. If there needs to be something, I'll bring it forward next, next time around, but I don't foresee that happening. Right now.
Okay, perfect. Alright.
Uh, Diane, can I ask her one?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick thing to get that. Sorry, just because it's gonna be so tight this year. And, you know, we made a promise that we were gonna, you know, when I ran, I was gonna ask questions all along and not just wait till the end. So with those items, Sheri, that were ordered in May for the school side. Were they necessary to order for the running of school last year? I mean, I know they were planned spending.
Yes, they were necessary.
Okay, to be used. So they're used up, whatever.
A lot of it is curriculum.
Okay.
Speaking to the curriculum.
Yeah.
Very important.
Yeah, I work in a school, so I, I do get.
Yeah, and that's why I'm telling you that. Um, so you can understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, it was absolutely necessary.
So because you said there's like six hundred thousand outstanding that you'll be play, paying invoices to. So.
Well, I didn't say six hundred thousand.
Oh, maybe. Okay.
I said there was uh, some of money. That has been encumbered. It's nowhere near six hundred thousand. Um, it's probably at this point. Under seventy-five thousand. Um, I'm trying. Very hard to pay it all down so that I have a very small encumbrance. Uh, leftover, which I have to book on the town side. So it's not gonna pull a lot from the bottom line is what I'm, I'm telling you.
Yeah, okay. So and it was all necessary, of course, curriculum. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, we are under old business. So you kind of gave us, do you have anything else to say about their software transition or anything like that? I mean, you said you're kind of working with them to get the report straightened out.
No, it is, that's the only thing that I'm a little. Upset about is the reporting capability, but um, I think we'll be able to work. Through uh, with the programmers on that. And I'm sure it's something. That the cells of certain expenditures are not working the way they should. Um, so I hope to have that resolved very soon. Uh, other than that, they are very responsive to us. Um, they, when we call them for help, they are there. Helping us every step of the way. They've been more than, than accommodating. Um. So I just want to let you know that that to me is a big comfort because we're not left alone. And large without, you know, some support and guidance that we need right now. Once we uh, go through this for a year, we'll, we'll know. What's going on and how to do things. And there should be all the bugs should be worked out of it. And we should be fine. So other than that, I think it was a smooth transition. I thought it was very easy to learn. The system. I've learned other systems and it's pretty user-friendly. So I'm excited about it.
Good. Okay, item seven B, audit status. Um.
Like I said. I'm calling him tomorrow to get him in here.
I wanted to ask one question in here under audit. Um, I'm going back to the last audit that was just completed. And the corrective action items. So, um. We had one significant deficiency identified on financial reporting. That was a repeat finding. And it was um. Utilizing balancing accounts, recording revenue and expenditures. And they wanted us to fix that. And we said we were gonna fix it with the. Deployment of this new accounting system.
Mm-hmm.
Is that being done? I just want to get a status on that because the other two corrective action items have been completed. And this one's outstanding. So I just want to make sure that we're gonna see that fixed. And it's going to be happening.
That is part of the.
Okay.
The other part of it is me. Setting up revenue accounts and expenditure accounts. For those liability accounts that were put on the books and they shouldn't be there.
Right.
So I, I met with him and I know exactly what accounts he's expecting us to do. And I will be doing that um momentarily. I'll be working on that.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep this on the agenda so we just don't lose sight of it. So we know that, because I don't want it falling into next year.
Well, I have, one of the things I have to do is write a corrective uh, action plan. And submit it to the auditor so he can submit it to the state. And that will be all part of my written. Um, presentation to him of how we're gonna fix these things. And um, with that. Being said, I will work on, on that to complete. So that the audit um, for twenty twenty-one will include those adjustments. And that should go away. That should be fine.
I have the only outstanding corrective item is those accounts to be fixed. So we already fixed the A C H controls. We already fixed the controls over payroll.
Yeah, yeah, that's the major one. The major one is what you said. And uh, we'll have that fixed.
Okay. That.
Now bear in mind, since we didn't adopt. This software essentially until after the last fiscal year closed. You know, I suspect we might see that audit finding again on the audit. That he's starting right now.
I know, so.
Not completed during.
We repeat, it's gonna be a third time, but I want to be able to say when he sees it the third time that it, we can say it's all fixed with the new system, period. And we can see it being done.
Actually, I would think that's the fourth times we've gotten.
I mean, I don't want to see it going beyond this fiscal year. I want it to be fixed.
Well. To be honest with you, you had to hire me before and.
Yeah, I know. I mean, past is the past.
Me in March, so it's been seven months, you know. I think I'm doing.
One of the issues we had as a, as an organization is no one ever tracked. You know, deficiencies coming out of audit reports and corrective actions to see that they were done. So. I'm gonna start doing that, so.
Well, that's good because my reputation is not to have any deficiency.
Right.
In an audit, and I never have. So. I'm gonna ensure that goes away.
It'll go away. Yippee.
Sheri, you're cleaning up a lot of stuff, for sure. I watched it. Not, I mean, we all know.
Yeah.
Keep it going. It's going good.
Yeah, one day at a time is what I say.
Absolutely.
We already kind of got an update on the Community Senior Center Building Committee. So, because they are kind of tied to, we, you know, we've got the contract going on that. So let's go on to new business. Okay, Eric, this Rand Multi-Use Turf Field Project. So is this the age-old question? Are we going to, as an organization, a town? Come out for or against it or? Is that what item is supposed to be?
You are the Board of Finance.
Right.
And this will be a seventy thousand dollar per year ongoing expense. Um, if it gets passed. So. It's certainly in your domain to comment on this for or against as a board if you so choose. You may not choose to do that. You may choose to be silent. Um, but. If you uh, decide as a board you're for or against it, you probably ought to state that publicly. Since I think people would look for the Board of Finance to provide a little guidance on that.
Well, the last I have on this is it, it definitely passed. Their last meeting to go to referendum. Their last meeting to go to referendum, so it's officially going on the ballot. November second, I think is the date. There will be a vote on this. Where I myself personally sit on this, I just think it's a lot of money.
I would say that, you know, if you just think back to the budget cycle we just completed. If we had come to the town with a seventy thousand dollar increase. We couldn't get that passed. We all know this. We had to zero out everything to get a budget. So, uh you know, my general take. Uh I'm not always a complete hardliner about these things, but I would find it immensely frustrating. If after that. We tacked on seventy K a year for how many years? What is it? You know, five, six years, Eric, remind me.
Ten years.
Ten years. Ten years. Uh, after that battle that we just had, to tack on seventy K a year like it was nothing, um. No, I I personally think it's perfectly fair for this board to point out. That this is a bad idea, especially in context with what we've been dealing with. Uh, you know, in our Andover budgeting. It's it's not okay, in my opinion. If we're shorting in comparison, uh you know, our own school and our own town. I mean, as Erica said repeatedly, we're we're right to the bone here on the town budget. Uh, you know, I I think it's a bad idea.
And we also said at the last meeting, it was kind of sneaky that it kind of came to be right after. The tough budget season. You know, to pull this out, have all these meetings. You know, it just, it just, it was so what Ram does. You know, they don't take into consideration any timeline, anything that just happened in all of the towns. You know, again, I know we talked about it a lot last meeting and nothing's changed for me. It was really a sneaky time when we had that hard budget season to just propose this, start having meetings. End of the summer, so I'm definitely not in favor.
We we don't know where the Board of Selectmen. Land on this yet, right? They've, I've been to all the meetings, they've just talked about it. No one's really come out officially said. Yay or nay, I mean.
They brought up some counter proposals of possibly doing, you know, digging up. And again, I don't know the technical thing, you know, I watch sports, but. Digging up the grass field and maybe doing another thing like that to a tune of maybe eight hundred thousand. You know, so after, you know, so they asked all the right questions, but you're right. I don't know where they. I don't know if they publicly, I didn't get to the end of the the tape on the meeting. I don't know if they publicly said yay or nay.
So realistically, you know, it's going to referendum, so end of story, you know. All the discussion is off the table now with this. Our only recourse right now as a town is to. Write a letter and say, you know, we don't support it. That's about it. Is that something that this board wants to do?
Furthermore, I would just add, one of the the first thing that we should do is highlight it. This is happening. People need to turn out and vote. Um, you know, even if we don't take a firm position, yay or nay, although I I actually am supportive on taking a nay position. Uh even if we weren't, didn't wanna go that far. If the, uh you know, as Louis said, you know, they they kind of. You in the situation where you're kind of almost sneaking this thing in, it's it's unlikely to be a high turnout election. And or referendum rather, and that's my main concern, is that you could get this thing passed with terrible voter voter turnout, and we're stuck with it.
Right.
Yeah, judging by past referendums. You know, you might get a hundred votes total in the town.
Right, which is absolutely atrocious, and this is my point. Uh, we need to, i- i- if anything, the the biggest thing we could do is highlight it. I think the average Andover voter. If they were activated and engaged, would look at it and probably see it more or less as we are, not everyone, but you know. And w- our position on whether it's a good idea or not. You know, again, I am supportive of of taking a position, but the number one thing for me is trying to get people to raise the awareness.
Right.
If everyone recalls, there's a lot of history regarding this uh. This field project, they tried this uh a few years ago. And it uh it failed, and they they come right back. As Joanne mentioned, uh right after the very hard budget season for all three towns, to tell you the truth. Having having uh gone through the Ram School System itself, my wife, my two sons. And eventually my grandson, um it's just, it's bad, bad time. It's the same players that uh presented it last time that now are are charging this thing right through with the help of uh Superintendent Leslie. Um, I personally think the part of finance should take a stand and uh, you know. As a group and uh basically uh next the whole project, because uh. We have other things in this town to worry about besides another seventy thousand dollar tax bill to the town every year. Uh till this thing is paid up, and where does it end? That's my take on the whole thing.
Right, cuz then we're gonna have to replace it after the.
And and I I I li- I listened to each presentation, I listened to the board, our Board of Selectmen's present, you know. Their uh presentation and and discussion and everything else, and uh I I agree with uh. Especially Scott Prithon, I mean, the the. You can mitigate the uh the drainage issues, and if you look at what the Hebron Public Works has done to those fields. They're they're pristine. The Rams. Ram uh fields and the town of Hebron fields and our soccer field. Um are are in pristine condition. Um if you can mitigate the drainage situation at that football field that they wanna make into a colosseum. Uh, fine, but uh, you know, there's nothing better than I. As I've looked at the studies of herb fields and things like that and. Uh athletes, especially real good athletes, are prone to injuries. Uh a lot more on a turf field than they are a grass natural field, so. Um, just my thoughts and uh I'm uh I'm voting no.
Yeah, I I'm supportive of the board taking a firm position on this, if you guys are. I'm with you.
I think we should. I think we, I I don't think if we try to, we can either write letters to the River East like we do. But I think I'm in favor too. I think we really have to just say what we said here, which makes common sense. Um, who usually, when we do do a letter, who usually drafts that? Is it, is there one person? Does it come from Mark? As the the head?
Yeah, it would for likely come from the chairman, I would think.
Writing a letter isn't gonna change anything, it's still going to referendum.
Right.
So our.
No, we know, but I I don't mind making a stand.
Is getting the public aware, so people come out and vote. Even if Vandover votes it no, if Marlboro doesn't come with us. Even if Marlboro does come with us and say no, I don't know if we still have votes to override Hebron. So, you know, you.
Typically in the.
Yeah, it's huge in Hebron right now. They they're all, they're gathering their their votes, for sure.
Yeah, typically in the past, it's always been that if Andover and Marlboro mobilize sufficiently, we can block Hebron. But it it always has to be, you know, both towns in agreement, uh otherwise Hebron gets what it wants.
I don't know. So here's what I'm I'm throwing an idea out there. Instead of writing a letter to the. Ram Board of Ed, which really won't do anything for us, it's just officially on. Why couldn't we do some kind of flyer from the town to all of our town people? You know, timing it close enough to the election, do you know what I mean? To say, are you aware? Please vote. This is important.
Right.
Great idea.
I I I think if we were to send a a flyer around to town, I think we'd have to be neutral on the ultimate question. But the awareness, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong about.
Why do we have to be neutral if we're all against it?
So the first thing.
I don't, I don't have a reason to be neutral if I'm against it, so I just was wondering.
So the thing you can do is you can put a letter directly in the. Uh River East, and it's completely appropriate for the Board of Finance to write a letter to the River East. You know, expressing uh their desire to not uh pass this, if that's what you choose. And it's also perfectly fair to post that on the town's social media site. Um, you know, that that's, that's an opinion from the Finance Board of the Town of Andover. So you have the right to post that, you know, if you so choose. Um, I suppose if you really wanted to send it to every resident in the town, you could. Why not? It's just a mailing.
I think you just have to be visible and vocal and and more or less involved. I mean, truthfully, that's how I got involved in the Town Matters and the Board of Finance was just being present. Learning, listening, you know, um so that's all I was gonna say, Robert. I I understand the neutral thing. I didn't mean to come on so strong. I just mean, I don't think it's such a bad idea to to post some reasons why we don't think it's a good idea. But, I mean, that's in then asking who drafts it. I have no problem starting to put something together and then passing it over for everyone to look at and add opinions. I wouldn't be able to work on that till October, though, but, which is, you know, and then, but so that's, I just was wondering procedure.
Time, I can't remember any letter ever going out before since I've been involved, so. Um, I don't have the history that Rob has and Kurt has, you know, in this.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I don't know that that I can recall us taking that step and. My hesitance, you know, may not be really well-founded, guys, uh you know, this might be me uh being unwilling to take my own side in an argument. Um, I don't know why I'm suspicious about it, but that's it, no, and in, it was for some reason, the direct mail idea is the one that that. Bothered me, and the idea of putting a thing in the River East is fine with me, and these are not really consistent positions, so. I'm just gonna go ahead and say, fine, um, let's do that. Let's start working up a draft. Let's pass it around. Uh you know, Mark's not here tonight, but he, you know, he's gonna need to look at it, right? And, but in general, the idea of the Board of Finance flat out saying that this is, we think this is a bad idea for our town. I'm on board, so forget my quibbles about the process or whatever. Let's work on that. We have a little bit of time. We should, we're gonna wanna get that out there in advance of the election. You said it's. Uh the referendum, which is in the first week of November. So we've got like a month, basically, to get this publicized.
Yeah, if I'm gonna work on a draft, it will definitely be in October. I've got some big things coming up. Um and I'm happy to start putting it together and then sharing it with all of you. And then if it's too much, you know, and I mean, yeah, then we should do that, and then maybe, like you said, third week of October. Would be, you know, to start getting it in people's heads, and then the voting is at the beginning of November.
Yeah.
Right, personally, uh I I feel that uh. Us just taking a stand that we're we're not in favor of the project. And advertising that fact either through the River East or uh an article where every every town's person sees it. I I really think that's about as far as we can really go, um to to draft a letter and everything. I'm just, now we, there's a lot of people in town, I'm sure that are in favor. Um, those that have still age kids, uh that that would be using a field and things like that, so. Uh, but I I do think that just just taking the stand that we do. Um and hopefully the Board of Selectmen do the same, based on what I've heard, now listening to their meetings. Um, then the townspeople need to make up their own decision when it comes to the referendum. Is a ways off, so uh a lot of people will forget, um if we were to write something, so that's my thoughts.
Yeah, we wanna get that in there, you know, more or less right before the election to get to get people aware and involved and, you know, not have it fade.
If you want a chance of of opposing it, you should start now and start doing it vocally. Um, without doing it. You know, you're gonna have to go big if you want a chance of preventing this from happening. That's my sense.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, all right, so when you say that. What are you thinking? You you thinking multiple letters? Are you thinking we put this in the River East every week, you know, that kind of thing? Wh- what do you, what are you thinking, Eric?
Yep. Yeah, I'm thinking flying over all three towns with a plane.
What's the budget on that, buddy?
Eric's gonna donate it.
Yeah.
I think it's right, though, because then you're gonna get one letter out, say maybe the beginning of October. And then you're going to get the people in favor, so they're gonna start writing their letters. Um, yeah, so it would be interesting, and then hopefully you have people join. The not in favor side, only because we want our money to go to other things, not because it's a bad thing. It's just where you're spending the money and what you're gonna use it for, that's all.
Yeah, I I mean, I would say, I really, my take for what it's worth. Is that we hammer on the point that we could barely pass a budget this year for our town.
Yeah.
Okay, you and I may have a disagreement um about our budget priorities or what our budget should have been this year. But putting that completely aside, if seventy thousand dollars comes out. In, you know, for the next decade, that makes all those discussions harder. No.
Well, the other thing I think that's worth thinking about is that. Thinking about it in terms of the overall mission creep towards athletics. Because remember, this is also a Ram Board of Education that has decided. They're not gonna charge any student activity fees anymore, so they're not gonna recover any of the costs from athletics for the students. And it's also a group that has fairly recently, in the last three years. Decided we couldn't possibly run a high school without a full-blown athletic director. You know, all while enrollment is dropping like a rock. You know, I I mean, personally, I think they're, you know, they're prioritizing athletics. You know, in a very tough budgetary climate, and to me, that hurts. You know, that hurts the core mission of a school, which is education. Um. So I'm certainly not for it, but. I mean.
Good point, Eric. They're just not, I I mean, I think we all know how we feel. It's, you know, it's just not a reasonable budget. For the millions of emails and all the stuff that we talked about, it it's not, so. Hopefully, I agree with you. I don't, I think, hope if we have to vote or whatever we have to do, but. I know we talked a lot last we, last meeting. It's just not a good use of money right now, and you're right. Thank you for bringing up the enrollment, which is almost in half. So I mean, how much longer, you know, how many teams and all of that are gonna? Uh, yeah, again, I did, I like athletics. My kids played sports, but I wouldn't be in favor of this.
Uh I got two kids that are gonna be going into Ram, and I'm perfectly happy to say no to this, uh you know, and you know, my girls play sports, but. Yeah, this is nuts.
Let's let's build up our own recreation athletic department here in Andover.
To the extent that makes sense, yeah, um you know, my my daughter plays soccer right now. It's in, it's actually in Hebron. Um, you know, we use their fields. They have a great set, they have a wonderful set of fields um over at Burnt Hill. Uh, you know, that's great, but this is. Yeah, again, we're balancing priorities here. This is what we do. Every budget cycle, we do this. We have a finite amount of funds that we can use to use for certain things, and if you take seventy K off the top, right off the start. It just, it's gonna put pressure on everything else.
Do we wanna make a formal motion to draft a letter and then see where it goes at the next meeting and? Obviously, I'd like to get some input from Mark and, you know.
That's what I was gonna say, I'd like to hear from Mark.
Yeah, so. I don't know if it needs a formal motion. I don't know if it's just something to say, you know. Put it on the agenda.
Why don't we put it on the agenda, Diane? I think that makes sense. Let's just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And Joanne, if you, you know, said you wanted to take a stab at a draft and maybe, you know, take October to kind of. Before the next meeting, and maybe we can kind of have something to have talking points around.
I just have a, uh my son's getting married in the next couple of weeks, so my focus is gonna be there, but then beginning of the month. But then, beginning of the month, we start drafting it and then sharing it around.
Congratulations to your son.
Yeah, it's, it's my oldest. It was a pandemic delayed wedding, so, you know, the family is gonna have a wedding this year, so, yay.
Yeah, I hear that. They got a family wedding coming up in October. That's basically almost like a makeup. Because, uh, we had a wedding last year that most of the guest list had to be struck from, so I hear you.
Exciting times, but stressful, you know, but happy, mentally happy. Everyone survived the pandemic and all of that, so thank you. So right after, you know, beginning of October, I'll draft something.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so just for the record, if you wait to the next meeting, you're already too late. The next meeting is the twenty-seventh of October. The referendum is the second, so you've missed any deadlines for any publications. You've missed any possibility of doing a mailing. So if you're going to do it, you cannot wait till the next meeting. You're gonna have to make a decision and work on it. You know, as a group between now and then, um, or else, you know, you probably just shouldn't bother.
Should, maybe we should talk about, maybe we should have a, try to schedule a short special meeting, um, early October. By the way, the twenty-seventh, you said?
That's correct. Next board of finance meeting is October twenty-seventh.
Oof, okay, I was thinking the twentieth, alright. Uh, yeah, you're right, that's way too close.
What, what, why don't we just take a, uh, take a, take a vote tonight if somebody wants to make a motion, um, on, on where we stand on this entire project?
Right.
Then wing it from there.
But wait, I mean, we, if we're gonna approve a letter, I think, I, I agree with you, like, in terms of our intent. I think we're all clear on this point. Um, but approving a letter, I think, requires, I don't know whether we need a meeting or if we can just pass it around.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, a big fan of sending out a letter personally. I think I said that before when I talked. I think, no, I mean, as a stand as a board, and that will get out that the board, the town of Andover Board of Finance, basically, uh, you know, does not support the, uh, you know, the, the new Ram Athletic Fields and, uh, and then just get that out to the voters.
But how do we get that out, then?
Uh, I'm sure it'll be reported in the River East, that's for sure, so.
My thought, Kirk, was not gonna be a huge, like, official letter. I mean, I, getting our point, you know, something to the, something to the effect, I don't wanna pop it into the ground, just 'cause I have so much going on, I might not, well, right now, but just a little letter to the, you know, to the editor, blah, 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 pointing out how this all came about. It's kind of unfair at the, you know, after a very busy, tough, um, budget season to this, have this project just come up and never voting on it. You know, I mean, I will make sense. I don't see what's wrong with just drafting something, showing it to all of you, not sending it without any. And then if we like it, and if we feel like it could move, we're putting it in the River East or whatever we're gonna do. Maybe then we could throw a meeting together, like the tenth or so. I don't even have a calendar, but.
Oh, then, then again, then again, Mark, Mark is our, is our chairman, and everything, everything that we do should go come, you know, should come through him. So I would like to get his, uh, his take.
I mean, we would have to come up with some kind of quick draft and then get on the phone with Mark in a couple of weeks and see, get his. And then see where it goes from there. Does that work for people?
We don't have a lot of time.
Yeah.
Well, listen, I'm the busiest lady on the planet, and if I'm willing to draft the letter, not on the planet, sorry. But right now, I got a lot of irons in the fire and working like a ton, so. I, but if you all don't want that, then that's fine. I, you know, I'm willing to put in the effort even in my busy schedules, so. I wanna have a meeting in a couple of weeks, then I'll save my time for something else, if Kurt doesn't wanna do that.
So.
Well.
It's not on our side.
So.
Does anybody know if Marcus back? Is he back next week? Or is he still?
Listen, I have a wedding next week, so I can't do it next week, but I'm willing to be the.
Just for me to be able to pick up the phone and call him and give him a heads up, what's going on.
All, I mean, that's, that's whatever you all decide. But I mean, I would have drafted something after the wedding, show it to all of you. Of course, going to Mark, like, if he doesn't like the idea, you could all tell me, forget it, he's not in, and then I save my time for other stuff. I would never disrespect the chairperson. I just know how these things take time, so.
Right, and so I'm just looking at the calendar. And if we are willing to circle back for a short meeting on, say, the thirteenth, maybe we could do that a Wednesday earlier in October, so we can get this off the ground. If, if between now and then, there's a conversation with Mark and Mark's not hot trot on the idea, then maybe we nix the whole thing, but, uh, maybe we could throw something on the calendar so that we can reconvene and say, okay, we all approve or don't approve of this idea of this draft that, you know, you're, you're proposing that you're gonna write, which is awesome. And, you know, instead of waiting till the end of the month, which is too late. So, you know, I don't know that we can, functionally, we can do this without getting together again, is, is my point.
I think that's a great idea, and I, that's all I like to do is have a date in mind. Because when you're balancing a lot of things, as you do too, yeah, that's perfect to me.
You need a deadline.
I definitely need a deadline, yeah.
I completely understand this, which is why I'm looking at a calendar, uh, so could.
Think that may be a problem, 'cause isn't the thirteenth, like, the board of selectmen meeting, the board of ed meeting, isn't there a bunch of meetings on that date? In the town calendar already?
I- is there? Sorry, I'm looking at my phone. I'm not looking at the.
Because of the holiday, because of Columbus Day.
Oh, okay.
Round, thirteenth is already the board of education and the board of selectmen.
Okay, that's gonna work, alright.
So the Zoom accounts are taken up.
Okay, let's, um, uh, calendar.
There's nothing on the twelfth, that's the Tuesday. You can probably do it on the, well, the twentieth is too late.
Yeah.
You could probably do it on Wednesday, the sixth, but that is.
That's too early for Joanne, right?
Thank you, yeah, that's too early, but I could definitely do the twelve. I just, I think, a- again, we know that we're gonna be up against it. It's our one shot. You know, we're gonna maybe write that letter, and then you're gonna see follow-up letters in the two weeks after that. So I'm for that. I'd be for the twelfth, but it's.
There's the twelfth and the, the fourteenth, there's, there's a meeting, um, building committee, but that's it. At seven, so the only thing I'd throw out there is, you know, I can, if we need to do it on the twelfth, I might be late. I, I have, right now, my daughter has soccer practices on, on Tuesday nights, and they tend to end at seven in Hebron. So, uh, I can try to make it. I can try to chime in in advance. You guys can start without me or something like that. If it has to be the twelfth, the twelfth is fine. I'll, I'll make it work. I just.
Fourteenth is fine too. I mean, I don't know what other, what the other members. And I hope you guys all know, when I said I'll find something else with my time, I didn't mean, like, leave the board of finance. I just meant, in my life, you know.
I knew what you meant.
Or family.
Put a tentative meeting on the calendar for October fourteenth at seven PM.
I'm good with that, if everyone else is.
I'm good with that, even though I'm supposed to be in the other meeting, but you know what? So Ed can run that meeting without me.
And Diane, you're gonna run it by Mark, right, that we would do that?
And I will prob, I'll try and give Mark a call next week. I'm hoping he's back.
Kurt, that sounds like a plan, yeah.
Alright, so, let's do that. Can we put a tentative meeting on the calendar, Amanda? For the fourteenth at seven PM?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I will put it on my to-do list. I will call Mark next week. I'm, I'm assuming he will be back in town. And and if he's against it, then we'll just cancel the meeting.
Okay.
Did you say at seven PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, yay, okay, eight B, um, board of ed request letter regarding the la- non-lancelling account, putting their surplus in the non-lancelling. Um, let me kinda bring you up to date where we are. The letter that we got is kind of pretty generic. And it says, you know, up to two percent, approximately fifty thousand dollars. Where I'm sitting on this right now, and I did talk with Valley Brunel, um, last night as well, um. I would feel better from a process and transparency point of view. I have no problem personally on my, I'm not gonna speak for the board. Um, giving surplus until now, now back to the school. I just wanna wait until the school year budget is closed out and everything's accounted for, and we have an exact dollar amount. I think we should be making this decision, knowing what the exact dollar amount is, and putting this to the next meeting.
I agree, I agree.
Does everybody have any different opinion on that? Pushing this off until October? There's no urgency right now, you know, the money's not going anywhere.
Right.
That seems reasonable enough to me.
Agreed.
What did Val say when you chatted with her, Diane? Did she have any issue with that?
No, 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 I've talked to her as well.
Yeah.
She doesn't have an issue at all.
Right, yeah, that should be fine then.
So, so I will go on the record to make a motion to take, table this until the next meeting in October. Do I have a second for that?
The, uh, just to clarify, this, the regular meeting, yeah?
Regular meeting, yeah.
Second.
Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Hey, unanimous. Okay. Excavator.
Alright, I'm gonna share my screen again here real quick, presuming you can do this successfully. Alright, so we went back to the manufacturer and clarified. So, okay, let me back up and say, at this point, both the board of selectmen and, uh, CIP are in agreement with the purchase of an excavator. Um, so presuming that you all agree, the, the question, there's two questions to be answered. Presuming you agree, the first question is whether you want to uh, do it as a sixty-month loan, number one, or whether you wanna buy it outright in the case of the excavator. Um, and the secondary question is going to be, do you want to the one member of the board of selectmen was adamant that you could take this out of town aid road. Um, and, uh, the rest didn't really have an opinion on it. So the, the two questions to answer are where you want the funding source for this to be. And whether you want to, uh, do it as a, you know, a five-year loan, or whether you wanna just purchase the thing outright. So those are really the questions. Um, so, to, just to, to where we are, we've been renting this thing, uh, now for about three months. Um, the total cost, uh, so the, the first two months of rental can be applied a hundred percent to the cost of purchase of machine. The third month of rental, seventy-five percent of it can be applied to the cost. So the outright purchase cost of the machine was ninety-six thousand, one thirty-five. There is a rental credit at this point of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six, which leaves a residual payment of eighty-four thousand, three seventy-eight, seventy-five. And they say we gotta pay a document processing fee of three hundred bucks. Um, so the total is eighty-four thousand dollars, and they are not offering, uh, so this is where it annoys me a little bit, 'cause they, to me, get a little scammy. Um, that, this purchase cost includes a twelve percent additional municipal discount. Um, if they offer zero percent interest loans, but they don't give us the twelve percent, they don't give us the, you know, twelve percent uh, municipal credit, if they do, which is kinda bullshit. But the bottom line is, if we were to use their financing for a sixty-month loan, the interest payment would be four point oh five percent. Uh, would bring the total purchase price to ninety-three thousand, six eighty-eight, eighty. Um, so we would be paying a total of nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars in interest, using their figures. Um, so that's really the question, you know, to me, I'm I don't like paying interest, so I'd opt to purchase it outright, but that's not my decision. That's kind of your decision.
I don't like interest either. Here's my question for you. You mentioned earlier that the select board talked about where the money can come from. And there was some, I don't know if I could say disagreement, but, you know, can, are they, i- is the one select member right that this can come out of town aid road?
So if your question is, can legally we spend town aid road money to purchase a piece of equipment that's used for maintaining roads, the answer is yes. Um, so it is, we are perfectly, we are not breaking any laws to do that. Um, and if you, uh, just to give you both the current balances, um, the current balances in the town aid road account as of today is a hundred and four thousand, one forty-five. So that's with them having paid us our, our, or August installment. Um, for the record, you can see before that, we had drawn that account all the way down to around ten thousand dollars, doing roadwork this year. Um, the problem is, is that if you take, you know, ninety-something thousand dollars from town aid road, that is ninety thousand dollars less you have to spend, you have available for next year's roadwork. Um, and we use the balance from this year to fund and do a lot of spring work, 'cause oftentimes it's cheaper to hire the contractors before the new fiscal year. Um, you know, so we do a lot of work in May, June, you know, April, May, June with the contractors. So, I mean, we could take it out of town aid road. But to me, that's the whole reason why we have a Public Works Capital Equipment Fund. Is to fund purchase of equipment for Public Works. Um, but, you know, so the answer to your question is you could take it from that if you so chose.
Right, I just, yeah, I, I see your problem with it, and I don't disagree at all. Uh, what do we have in our capital budget for equipment?
Uh, we.
Put in this budget year.
Yeah, it's a hundred K, but what do we have for a balance?
Our total balance is a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Oof.
Including the hundred K we're putting in this year.
Oh, I see it now. I'm sorry, it's right at the bottom there. So if we did this, um, we'd have like thirty thousand left. If this is eighty-four, you said eighty-four and a half, something like that, you'd be at a little less than thirty?
Well, plus twelve for the compactor.
Oh, God, okay, so, alright, so you're, you're, you're spending almost a hundred here.
Correct, yeah.
So that would more, it would almost wipe that out. We'd be down to, you know, fourteen thousand or something like that, if, off the top of my head. Yeah, fifteen thousand, okay.
I mean, I guess theoretically, if you wanted to split the difference, you could purchase the loader or the excavator, uh, from Public Works Equipment. And you could purchase the, uh, what do you call it, the compactor from town aid road? If you thought that was appropriate.
Yeah, but, I mean, the capital budget exists for a reason. Yeah, I'm, I'm really, I'm kind of leaning where you were leaning, which is, this is why we have a capital budget.
But the price of the compactor is below the dollar threshold, what we call capital equipment. It's fifteen thousand and up, so it probably should come out of town aid road.
Oh, okay, I hadn't done it that way, Diane.
Only because I read that purchasing policy today.
Serves you right for doing that. It serves you right for doing that.
Too much information.
D- Diane, can I comment?
Yes.
Um. And I'll ask Eric and maybe even Rob, what happened between last Thursday night or capital improvements meeting versus tonight?
I I think we're gonna get to the process issue later. Would you agree, Eric?
Yeah.
I, how do you, how do you figure that, Rob?
Um, I was gonna do that in liaison, but okay, we can bring it up now. We should bring it, you know what? Let's just do it now.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, not to throw a huge wrench in the works, everybody, but uh we had our CIP meeting and. Was brought up to us at that time that this whole purchase plan kind of happened outside of CIP. It was, you know, the the Board of Selectmen. Um, decided this needed to be done, and it was not run through CIP. CIP hadn't had a chance to review it. We did talk about it at our meeting, and nobody thought it was crazy or anything, but there was a little bit of frustration and concern. That it had not gone through what we considered to be kind of proper channels in terms of if if you have a a capital improvement committee. And you're gonna make capital purchases, why were they not consulted? Um, we got consulted at the absolute eleventh hour. So although I don't think I've seen it yet, there was a decision made that. The chairperson of the capital improvement committee would be sending an email or something along those lines to both. The Select Board and the Board of Finance to. Ask for some clarity on the process here and 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 just sort of question why this wouldn't, hadn't been. Brought before the CIP before it was brought before everybody else make final decision. Um. That said, I don't think we had an issue with the substance of the. Of the proposal. In other words, I don't think we sat down there and said that these numbers are unacceptable, that this isn't a reasonable idea. It was all about the process. And I don't think anybody at CIP was really willing to try and hold this thing up on principle. We just wanted to put it out there that going forward, we we, I think CIP should probably be involved. I I, do you think that's a fair summation, Kirk? Because you were there too.
Well, I um, I I need to add the fact that this basically goes against our charter. Uh, the charter which states what the CIP's uh. Um. Uh, job is, uh, you know, to give recommendations to the Board of Select, the Board of Finance. Um, and it also violates the uh, the person policies that that I read, uh, in in regards to bids or RFP. Um, you know, it's it's a, it's a, it's a very expensive item. There's many companies that that build this unit. Um, we've, we've, uh, we've rented them, uh, you know, before in town for specialized work, which is what they did with this one. Um, but I think it totally, it totally, um. Doesn't, it 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 goes against the uh, you know, the charter and the uh, and the uh, wha- what the CIP was, 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 uh. You know, was made to do. Um, I E. The, you know, just just go back and 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 the last purchases, uh. A packer truck for four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that went to RFP. Um. And the low, the low, the low bid was accepted on that. Uh, any anything that the fire and party. Uh, goes out to, goes out to an RFP and all, you know, and they. CIP requests at least three bids or our three RFPs on each individual item, so. This totally goes against everything and for the Board of Selectmen to approve it without any uh input from the capital improvements. You know, and also violating basically what the charter states on the amounts. Uh, of of different equipment uh costs. Uh, that needs to go to bid, um, is just, I don't, I I don't buy it, and I I made that statement clear at the capital improvements meeting the other night. So I just, the the letter, the letter that Fred sent, I'm sure he sent it, but it went to Mark as chairman of the Board of Finance. And as you see, you know, Mark's away, so that's why it didn't get probably, you know, read into tonight's uh, um, agenda, but uh. That's just, just my thoughts again, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's basically totally usurping the entire uh. Uh, capital improvements committee and the charter.
Let me ask a question. Didn't we get this pricing through a government sourced kind of? Because there's a carve out for purchasing part to be sufficient to fulfill the bids and the purchasing. Did we get this price through that?
You can, you can, uh, I don't know if the town had gone through the uh, ct.gov, the state of Connecticut purchasing. Now, the the purchasing uh consortium, basically, Sourcewell was used on 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 our last dump trucks that uh. That the town purchased. Um, you know, there's uh HDAC is another consortium out there. That a bunch of municipalities use, but you basically you get, you get the state. The state bid on any piece of equipment that you're after, whether it be a, an excavator, a fire truck, a police cruiser. You know, a vehicle for the, for the building inspector, if you were to buy one, things like that, the the state has a natural bid list for this. And you can advertise it on the state bid list at no cost. Um, and that gives, that gives a chance for everybody out there that uh supplies this type of equipment. To submit their bid, and there's many, trust me, there's many, many people or, you know, companies that that uh, that construct excavators. We happen to be using this one, it was brand new, uh, because they needed to rent it for the drainage work on uh Shoddy Mill, no question. Um, but to to go and purchase it and and have it come through the Board of Selectmen and say, yep, you can take it out of this, take it out of that. Without the the Board of uh, the Capital Improvements Committee, number one, not even knowing it. And basically going against the charter as as it's written right now. Um, it just doesn't cut it far as I'm concerned.
Oh, realistically, we didn't get three bids.
No.
I mean, we have turned to other people for not getting three bids.
So he did supply multiple bids for equipment with the packet. Um, the one we are selecting, that is a. That is their, basically their state bid price is what we're, you know, we're paying. Um, you're right, it did not go to RFP. I'm not gonna tell you it did, because it did not. The the question though is that. You know, so so let me go back and say that the first thing that happened is. Is we had a discussion with CIP in the spring about the purchase of a larger size excavator. And the the CIP was not interested in in even really hearing it or discussing it in the spring, which is okay, that's the right. Um, so we rented the piece of equipment that we rented. Because I I sent Jay out and I said, go find out what all the other towns are using. You know, and go try them out, see whether they'll let you try them. So that's what Jay and Tommy did. We sent Tom, because he's our normal equipment operator out. Um, and they tried a couple different units that other municipalities. Uh, used, because the real question is, is can we get one small enough that we can tow it? Um, with our existing trucks without buying a new trailer, yet big enough to do most of the drainage work we need to do. So that's really why they settled on the machine they settled on, because. Um, it seems to be a fairly common unit in use by other municipalities. And it's the right size, and it's one of the few dual piston units in this size. That has the the oomph to do it. So they tried it with Mansfield. And then, you know. They first, we first demoed it, we had the company drop one off. Um, and they took it out to the pit, and they dug a bunch of holes with it, rotated it through all the operators and said. Can it do what we expected to do? And the answer was yes. Um, so they, you know, leased it for the summer for the drainage work. Um, you know, and the, the, you know, because we didn't have approval to buy it before. So, but the the problem is, is that, you know, you're sucking up four thousand bucks a month to rent this thing to use. So, you know, one of the things we looked at was if we were gonna rent it, if we decided that was a machine we wanted. Could we recoup that cost if we purchased that machine? And the answer from them was yes, if you buy it within the period that you're leasing it. We will apply most of that cost to the purchase. So that's kind of where, how we ended up where we are. Um. You know, we could certainly look at other machines at this point, um, and go back and do an RFP, but we're going to lose. You know, fairly significant, you know, somewhere in twelve thousand dollars worth of rental that we're not gonna be able to apply to the purchase. So I think that's why Board of Selectmen was on board with it. Because if you go back and relook at it now, you know, now you have to be looking at a machine in order to to equal your cost. You gotta get something that's twelve thousand dollars cheaper than this, which was unrealistic.
Um, Eric, a quick, just to clarify, at what point do we lose the ability to apply the rental money? That twelve thousand or so toward the purchase price of this particular machine?
Uh, so we originally had a four month rental on it, and we're in month. Three, we haven't paid for month four yet. So we could go another month if you wanted um to make a decision.
Right, but at the end of that fourth month, if we haven't agreed to purchase this machine. We sort of forfeit that discount, is that correct?
Yes. If we send it back to them and it gets rented out to somebody else, we've lost the ability to, to just to uh piggyback and own it.
Okay, so that's the practical consideration. Um, you know, not that anything Kurt said was wrong, I I I think he's right. Uh, it's just, you know, at the same time, you're talking about the practical fact that, you know. Unless we got a really good price from somebody else, I mean, we can bid it out. How long would the bid process take?
Month. But if we went through the consortiums that it talks about. In the purchasing documents, we wouldn't have to do the public bids. We could go there. And eliminate that step.
But so, so there's two things, one. I apologize, the governing section in the charter is section eight oh seven. Um, if you want, I can bring that up and you can read that.
Then it refers to this purchasing policy.
Right, basically, the the charter says that the Board of Finance needs to come up with a purchasing policy. Um, so it really dates back to the purchasing policy. Um. You know, and you've got to decide whether you want to abide by your own purchasing policy or. You know, you want to do something else. I think this does technically meet the requirements of the purchasing policy. Because the cost for the machine is established. You know, through the state bid process or through the original state municipal, whatever you call that. Um, you know, it's not, the the one for the other, for the compactor is a Sourcewell quote. Um, which we also accept, or we have in the past anyway.
So I'm gonna read this section, because it says the use of state of Connecticut or other government. Cooperative purchasing program shall be considered sufficient to fulfill the requirements of this part, and this is the part of talking about going out to RFP. So if we get. Through that cooperative and get a price there, we do not have to do the formal bidding process, correct?
That is correct.
So.
For the policy you have written now.
So if what we have now meets that requirement. I'm okay with not doing all the other stuff, because it's within our policy. I'm not in favor of going outside of our policy until we we rewrite it, because our policy is our policy. And what we have now, so I guess.
I was hoping I could just say that I. Our town has gotten in a little bit of trouble through the years since I've been here, fifteen years for not following procedure. And process.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to state, I I appreciate Kurt coming forward with that. And just talking about practical procedures and processes. Sherry's dealing with it now. Sherry's, you know, doing, you know, we, I agree. To save money wherever we can, but I feel like month after month at the, at these meetings, are we just gonna justify everything that's done? And I, that's hard for me to stand behind too. I get saving money and needing the equipment. But if we don't, and and I'll be, I will not talk long on this, but. The very core is, you know, following the procedures. That's what I do in my job all day is, you know.
Yeah.
In HR and with people and, you know, in a school is, we have to follow the process and the procedure. Everyone wants to cut corners, and I don't always think that, okay, so we save money, so it's okay. Okay, so next month. This person did this job in two hours, so he didn't have to work a full day. You know, I don't know where we cut the, you know, where we stop following process and procedure.
Well, I'm not advocating not following our purchasing.
Oh, no, that's just my point.
Right.
I just wanted to back up Kurt in this, and I really appreciate it. No, no, I get you.
I just, I was trying to make sure.
Yeah.
I don't wanna continue to rent a machine that we need to buy and waste money there. I really don't want to lose.
No, that's the end. I I get it, I get it.
But I want to comply with the policy, so if our quote falls into that exemption. For these government consortiums, then we don't have to go to public bid and we're done.
Right. I think what we talked about at CIP was that this is not necessarily technically a violation. Of our processes, but it's more, it's it's a little bit of a gray area. And CIP not being involved made us kind of uncomfortable with how this all went down. But my take, and I'll repeat it, is that I think we should think about the process issues and do better next time. And at the same time, not necessarily hold up something that is ultimately a good deal for the town. That's, that's my ultimate take on this, that we shouldn't just ignore procedure, correct? However, this one, and and I think as Eric has explained, it's a little bit. Uh, you know, technically, this, this can work, it's just maybe not the best way we could have done it. If if that's a fair summation, Eric.
Yeah, I would, and the other thing I would say is that when we started renting this. We rented this with the full realization that we might not buy it. And we might just spend twelve thousand dollars this summer, you know, on a machine. To get the work done that we needed to do. So I mean, you know, it's not like we, the town. You know, we didn't rent the thing. Being certain that we were going to then use that as the purchasing decision. We rented it and then, you know, uh. And then brought it back to the boards to say, well, given how much drainage work we have to do. It doesn't really make financial sense to continue renting this thing every summer. Because for what we're renting it, you know, in about five years, we can own the thing. So we'd be smarter to buy it rather than to continue to rent it.
Oh. I get the, and I agree that everything should go through CIP, but I'm looking for a document. That says it has to go to CIP first, because this purchasing policy doesn't even say that.
Well, this is another discussion we had with Eric.
And and the, and the charter says, refer to the purchasing policy, so.
A little circular, Diane, is the issue, and you know, when we first drafted that purchasing, I I was on the board when we drafted that thing.
Okay.
Um, that was our first cut at having any kind of purchasing policy for this town. I think we meant well, but I don't think we nailed everything down. And one thing that Eric brought up at the CIP meeting, and I'm complete agreement with this, is that maybe we need to tighten it up. And specify some, some procedures. Uh, our main concern when we drafted that thing. Was that we weren't bidding out anything necessarily.
Right.
Right, we had nothing in place that made us bid out anything. And we had had a course of performance in this town of going out and just, you know, the first selectman thought this was a good. And we had had a course of performance in this town of going out and just, you know, the first selectman thought this was a good deal and so it happened. And we don't do that anymore, thank goodness. At the same time, that purchasing policy could probably be better and more specific about the steps. And who does what? Uh I I think that's all, that's something that we talked about CIP and I I do agree. That the purchasing policy could be reworked and made clearer as to exactly whose role is what. And you know, step one, step two, step three. Um and I think that's something we should continue to kick around and and improve upon. At the same time, we have this thing in front of us. And if we want, if we do think this is a good idea, we have about a month to pull the trigger. That's my take.
I'm in agreement with all of that. I just want to make sure that going forward, we don't see this in another. Purchasing thing, you know, a good deal is a good deal, of course. But just kind of tighten it up and not not see the same thing in another meeting for another piece of equipment.
We can't just ad hoc this stuff left and right. I completely agree with that.
I don't have a charter in front of me, but I think the charter states, it used to be either two thousand or twenty five hundred dollars.
Because I printed it today.
Is it, is it, is it up to five thousand now, five thousand dollars? I think the Board of Finance set that amount.
So eight oh seven says. Purchasing. That the Board of Finance in consultation with the CIP and the Board shall establish or maintain written procedures and policies. Blah, 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 for purchasing. So there is no.
No set amount.
No set amount, so.
It refers, it refers to the purchasing policy, which does have set amounts.
Right, and the purchasing capital is fifteen thousand dollars or more. Which the. The loader is, the excavator, I mean, is. In that, but.
Correct. But.
Our policy, if it meets the requirements of these general requirements on page four. That we're getting the price through a cooperative purchasing program, government cooperative purchasing program. And we don't have to do public bid. I just want to make sure we're following our policy for this decision. I know we need to clean this purchasing.
Diane, what you need to understand is that every. Major manufacturer of excavators, fire trucks, vehicles, um pencils for the school. Um they they meet the the uh, you know, the consortiums uh. Thing, they're they're all members of it. You know, I I I deal with this every day uh in in my business of selling fire apparatus. You know, um every major manufacturer, my my own included, belonged to Sourcewell. Cause uh HGAC, there's uh uh there's two or three others out there. Everyone submits that same and follows that same purchasing procedures and pricing. Uh whether it be the state of Connecticut or the state of Texas or the state of uh Maine. Um all the, all fifty states in this country participate in the in these various consortiums. For buying municipal equipment. So um you're you're not, I mean, yes, you know, you're buying from a company that uses Sourcewell. Well, there's, there's probably fifty or sixty other companies that use Sourcewell. And are and would be more than willing to submit a RFP or a bid. The town of Andover for a brand new excavator of that size. That that's, that's the only thing I'm 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 trying, the only, the only point I'm trying to make is, you know, we've, we've done this um. Through the last um half a dozen pieces of equipment that were over fifteen thousand dollars purchased next to the fire station. Um and I was able to get, you know, at least three, you know, uh general bids or RFPs. On each piece of equipment. Um so that's, that's, I think, is following the procedures.
Carve out that you don't have to do public bids if you go through these consortiums.
Yeah, but it's not a public, it's an RFP, it's a request for purchase. There there's a difference between an RFP and a bid.
Yeah, but there's a carve out that you don't have to do that if you go here. That's why I'm saying I'm very confused here.
Yeah, but you you can do that with any manufacturer.
So then purchases made outside such shall comply with the following requirements and then it goes through the public big documents and what the requirements are. But if you're within those consortiums and you're buying through those, you don't have to do all that. It is, that's how I'm reading it.
Yeah, well, I I still feel if we, if we go through this purchase without sending it out to everybody. Um we're we're setting precedent, that's all.
So Diane, you are correct in that the current purchasing policy allows us. To use any of the cooperative bidding services such as Sourcewell. Um to establish the price instead of going and putting out our own RFP. Because essentially, it's just like the the salt bid, you know, for Krog or any of these other organizations. It is a competitive bidding process. We're just. You know, we're just not putting the bid out ourselves. We are putting the bid out. We are using somebody else's bid. Great cooperative buying agreement.
So here's my deal. I do not want to violate our policy. And I'm just asking for assurances because Kurt's reading this a different way that we should be getting bids and I'm trying to say. Are we fitting within this general requirements exemption? Until we clean up the process better.
And if we decide later that that exemption is too broad, we can fix it.
Right, I I guess what I'm saying, I want, I'm not in favor of violating our policy. I just want to make sure we're within it.
You are within your purchasing policy as written. To buy this as.
Kurt feels differently, so I guess I'm trying to understand how Kurt is reading.
Kurt just thinks we could do better. Not that what we're doing doesn't meet our actual policy would be my guess, Kurt. You're muted, sorry.
Now, they're, they're throwing a bone that they're going to uh, they're gonna put the. The rent, the amount of uh of money we spent on rental towards the overall purchase and that doesn't say that. Any other company Caterpillar, Kabota, um New Holland, there there's a million different. Manufacturers of that same size machine. Uh may not be spec exactly, I I can't even pronounce the name of, Eric, what's the name of this machine?
Takayuti or something like that.
That Takayuti, yeah. I'm I'm not questioning that it's not a good machine. It's just the fact that that you've you've made other boards and commissions go through the. Process of 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 going through capital improvements, getting their approval first. And then moving it on to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. You know, for their yes, yes or no, um in in the in the procedures. Um we followed it next door at the at the fire department and I'm not trying to say that that that, you know, that we wouldn't follow it, but. Um I just think it's setting a precedent when when something comes along and they say, well, we'll, 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 we'll give you, we'll give you. Rental, but you would have rented it anyway. Whether or not you're gonna purchase it, you know, firstly, I think we need more people down there at Town Hall, I mean, at Public Works than we do another machine. That that's just my opinion, but uh, you know. Just, just uh, you know, we we had this discussion Thursday night amongst everyone on that that was there for the meeting cap improvements. And uh it's it's kind of like, you know, getting off the rails, that's all.
Oh, I I understand the position that things should go through CIP. Okay, so in this case, it didn't do that. Here we are with a decision on a price to purchase an excavator. And I'm trying to determine if it's within our purchasing policy, we're not violating a policy. And we're getting a good price because of this rental credit that we can't get. And I don't know, we can't get any, we haven't rented from anybody else, so nobody's going to give us a rented credit. So.
Yeah, that that's kind of where I'm at too.
I want to make a good decision, be within policy.
If this is, if this squares with our policy technically, even if we have our issues with it. We can proceed and then tighten up the process. That's my, where I've been coming at this all along.
That's that's not, that's not the point of a different price. You know, I'm I'm all for saving money. Trust me, Diane, I'm not, I'm not against saving money. It's just the fact that the the process, the the transparent process that we have in place right now. Uh was not followed. And and a a Board of Selectmen uh made the decision over the Board of Finance. And the Capital Improvements Committee that it's okay to purchase this machine and get the, get the discounts that we're gonna get. And don't forget, just a few months ago, we had, we held a school to task on their outdoor. Classroom for X amount of thousands of dollars and basically said, you know, that that never went through capital improvements or anything. And.
The school is not required to go through CIP.
I understand that, but they still, they they did not, I I don't see it being constructed. That's my point. You know, based, based on the the uh what we went through with them. So it's it's just a. Basically a point of order, I don't, I don't know what you want to call it, it's just, you know, we, the the procedures were not followed. Uh properly as they have been recently in the past. So that's.
I agree with that.
Can I ask Erica a question? Um just if I'm gonna vote on this, how much work, and I think it was said at other meetings. How much work do we have lined up that requires this excavator, excavator?
Um I I mean, I'll, I'll be perfectly honest. You know, we've identified ten or twelve years worth of drainage projects we need to do. Our limitation is strictly manpower and hours we can actually do. Because we have so many other things we're obligated to do. I mean, we got, we didn't get a lot of drainage issues dealt with this year. Um because, you know, we got stuck dealing with storm response. Um but we also need to clean out all our waterways. That would take us two or three months and this is the obvious machine for doing that. You know, there's no question, we're gonna use this thing. You know, and there's no question, it's a, it's a very useful piece of equipment. Um in the past, we have rented one when we did projects. Um you know, we did not rent one last summer, but most summers Public Works ends up renting a machine. For at least a period of time every summer. Um we've just never pulled the trigger and actually purchased one ourselves before.
Yeah, that was a good answer. I mean, you said you have, you just said you have so, you've identified so much work that could be done. I mean, I know what they're used for, I know, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just a year long thing. I mean, clearly it can always be used or you can find news for it, but um, no, thank you. You've answered my question if I'm gonna have to vote ultimately. Thank you.
It's, I don't, I don't have a question on the need, you know, it's, 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 there's definitely, there's definitely a need for the machine. Um and it's not, not the Eric's fault or the public department's fault that the machine. Sat on the side of the road for two weeks due to the storms, the storms that we had. You know, the machine literally sat there without being used. I don't know, was it maybe two weeks? I'm not, I'm not positive on that, but that that's, you can't help that because the let the, the amount of manpower we have. In Public Works is four guys and and we've been inundated with three or four storms this this past. Uh summer and, you know, spring, summer and fall that have have taken, you know, these guys elsewhere. Um so while it sits there and 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 we're still paying rentals on it, you know. They 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 should, they should credit us for that, the time that it sat there, but they're not, but they're gonna take it off the price. You know, they under, understand all that too. Um so. It's just the fact that, uh, you know, to actually purchase it for the town of Andover, I think it needs to follow the right procedures. That's all. Not, not during a rental. You know, you, we're gonna rent it anyways if we need it or not.
And I understand Kurt that you're thinking they didn't follow a procedure, but when I'm reading the document, I'm seeing that we are within our procedures. Even though we don't like what they are and that somebody went outside.
Well, that's, that's fine and 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 if I have to stand corrected, I'll stand corrected, but I just know what I've done in in the past a couple of, couple of three years. You know, through the, through the Board of Fire Commissioners and uh. And I, and I, I know, you know, I I'm comfortable in in the fact that we follow the town's procedures. Uh we fought for these procedures for a long time and up until this, this newer administration that we have, nothing was followed up until. They came into, you know, they they came into tuition, so. Uh I'll, I'll, I'll leave it with, I'll leave it at that, you know, it's, it's, it's up to the board, whatever you want to do, that's, that's fine with me.
Do we want to make a motion or does people want to discuss this more?
I, I think we've discussed it enough, so you know, someone should make.
I'm set with discussion.
All right, so I'll stick my neck out and I will put forth a motion. To approve the purchase of the excavator as priced with the rental discount. With the condition that we are not violating our purchasing procedures. Because we're following, we're going in the carve out exemption. For cooperative purchasing programs. And with the added. Caveat that going forward, we will ensure that we're following the CIP process. And we will be looking at taking these purchasing policies and procedures and clarifying them better. To make it more clear about what the expectations are. Anybody think we need to add anything else to that?
My only question is whether we need to specify where we're taking the money from. Um you know, are are we agreed that we're taking this out of the uh Capital Equipment Fund?
I think, and this is my opinion, I think the excavator should come out of Capital Equipment and the compactor out of. Town aid road.
Okay, well, you know, I just think if if we're doing this, we probably want to have that. Agreed upon as well. So if that's your motion, then let's proceed on that basis.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Any further discussion? Does anybody have anything else they want to add? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi for me, Kurt?
I'm not, I'm not an I.
Like, figured that.
We have four yeses and one no.
I'm a no.
Okay.
There.
All right. All right, motion passes.
So Amanda, can you read the motion back so we make sure we got the verbiage correct?
It's a little blurry. I'm gonna have to backtrack on that one.
I will try and remember what I said. Kind of hard.
Okay, I wrote down the time of the recording.
Okay. So the second part of that would be the purchase of the plate compactor.
To come out of Town Aid Road.
Were you, was that original motion, did that cover both those pieces of equipment? I thought the first motion was just for the excavator, was that wrong?
Forgot, well, I meant to include both pieces because that's what the whole thing is for, right?
And then when I asked for clarity, you know, we were talking about where the money came from and and the clarification was that. You know, the larger piece of equipment was coming out of our capital fund and the smaller piece of equipment was going to come out of Towny Road. So I understood it, you had two part motion, yeah, covering both pieces of machinery, but. If if people want to split it up, we can, we could do that.
Okay.
Is everybody, I meant to include both pieces. Even though I only said excavator, I didn't say compactor.
Oh, Diane, I think you did say contact.
Oh, did I?
I think so. I think so.
I, I, I think you got it, but.
Okay.
I'm okay with it, with the added stipulation of doing better in the future, whatever that wording was.
Okay, and to put us. I'm gonna make another motion to put us and keep us all honest, I would like to make a motion. That the Board of Finance will. Be updating the purchasing policy for the town of Andover to. Add more clarity for the process that should be followed and the steps to be taken. I don't know if anybody wants to make a section, a second on that.
Sorry, Diane, yeah, I, I think we do need to revisit our policies.
And I just want to put it on record that we are gonna go and update this policy, so this doesn't happen again.
Agreed with that, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kurt, you an aye on updating the purchasing?
Uh, yeah, I'm an aye on that. Yeah, I'm an aye.
Alright, so, Lynda, you said aye, right? Okay. I heard you, okay, so, oh, good. Alright, did I do everything right?
Amanda's rewrite recap of the motion seemed to only have the larger machine in it. So we may need to. Make a second motion with respect to the smaller machine.
Okay, I'll make a, just to clear, clean it up, I'll make a motion that the purchase of the compactor. For the amount submitted, which was a Sourcewell bid, correct?
So, what was the amount again?
It was a Sourcewell, the Sourcewell bid for the new machine was twelve thousand, I think five hundred dollars. But they, we have, we rented basically a used machine. Because we needed to compact the bridge, it's got about a hundred and, it had about a hundred and forty hours on it. Now it's got about a hundred and sixty hours because we've been using it. That machine, they will sell to us for ninety five hundred dollars. We can purchase a brand new one, but given that we're, we can purchase the rental unit. With low hours on it for ninety five hundred, you know, we all decided saving the extra three grand would be. It would be smarter to do that than to. Than to purchase a new one.
Oh, that's a good deal.
Okay, so, so the motion to be amended. On the compactor is to purchase the used machine for ninety five hundred.
Correct.
Or out of Town Aid Road.
Okay, love it, second it, let's do it.
All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, okay. We gotta do the hard stuff in the beginning, not at the end.
So let's get that purchase policy revision thing high on the agenda, huh?
Hold on, we haven't got to the road striping yet.
Oh, God.
Alright, I think you can nix the road striping unless you have questions for us about it.
Did, did they run out, yeah, I do have a question, did they run out of paint from Lakeview Drive to Route Six?
They did run out of paint, they will be back to finish.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
There was at least one extremely irate person with us for painting lines. Who less, left me a, a pretty astounding expletive labeled. You know. You know, thing on my answering machine about his displeasure at being woken up by the, the roadwork at night.
Was it my neighbor down the street, was it?
It was too incoherent, you know, you could hear the F bombs, but it was hard to, to tell what the other words are.
All the joys of public service, Eric.
His intent was pretty clear that he was unhappy with the night work, though.
Okay.
Okay, so. We did that, we have this item on here, credit card purchasing policy, I have no idea what that is.
So there's a copy of that in your packet. So we just tuned up our credit card purchasing policies a little bit. And came up with a couple of new forms, we're just giving you this, I don't think the Board of Finance necessarily needs to approve this. But we just had a couple of issues with the way things were being done. So we tuned up our procedures internally a little bit as a, as a town hall. And I think Sherry could give you more info on that, but I, I definitely agree with it. Should be in your packet.
We don't need to make any motions, it's just a form, it's FYI, information only.
Correct, correct.
That's fine. Okay. Down here. Okay, we already talked about the purchasing policy, made a motion to do that. Town Hall Electrical Upgrades.
So I talked about that in my report, since the Board of Selectmen has decided to increase the scope. I'm not ready to, to ask for anything on that right now.
And that's all going through CIP, right?
As I'm concerned, that can go through CIP.
He already, he already sent the CIP last Thursday night, so.
And for the record, the initial Town Hall Electrical Upgrades was already approved by CIP. Board of Finance decided that should go to RFP. A while back, and I finally got around to drafting the RFP, but then the Board of Selectmen decided they wanted to take care of a bunch of other projects. As part of that, so it will go back to CIP and then come back to you.
Right, we basically have a larger proposal to deal with now.
It'll be over fifteen thousand, correct?
Presumably, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Still not that, what we needed to.
Alright, eight, H Affordable Housing Plan, you talked about that in your report, right?
Yeah, I don't think, as, as long as you guys have no objection to me signing for it, we don't need to discuss that further. I've added that in case you decided you wanted to make a motion or you wanted input in that.
Alright. Okay, now we're down to the approval meeting minutes, can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Wednesday, August twenty fifth? Right, Kurt?
Kurt's muted, but yeah, I think he said yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
Okay, any second? Okay, any discussion, no, all in favor? Aye. Best, okay. Liaison reports.
So we basically dealt with CIP, you know, that, that was the, the overwhelming. Bit of the, of our CIP meeting last Thursday was the discussion of this. You know, buying this, this excavator, so, and the process.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah, we, we, we went through this and I think made our opinion on it plain. And I think that to, to be continued in that. When Mark gets back, the, the letter that no doubt our chairperson provided him will come through. But, you know, it was really about the process, that was our main, that's really what we talked about at CIP. Almost exclusively, we also discussed the Town Hall project and the mission creep that's going on there. And we didn't make, I don't think, any decisions about it, we, we were informed about the situation. I think that's about all we did, Kurt, you gonna think of anything else?
Oh, sir.
Um, we've talked about the senior, the community center building project that we're going to contract for the site engineering, preliminary architectural drawings. So that is on its way, that's kind of where we're sitting at that. Next meeting, what's gonna happen with the senior set of community is we're gonna start identifying the services we want to provide, the needs we have for. Those services to be able to help with the architectural drawings. And we are going to do site visits for local senior centers to see what. Works, what doesn't work, what other towns did, and things like that as a group, and bring that, so that's kind of where we're sitting on that.
Sounds good.
Anything else anybody wants to talk about? It was a crappy summer with the weather. On record, and it's still raining.
It was wet, that's for sure.
Oh, tell them, mosquitoes will carry you away now.
On fire.
Can we send some of the rain to California?
I just had relatives who were evacuated, I think they got back into their house, but they live by, they have a house at Tahoe. And their house was in the danger zone, they had to evacuate for a week or two. So, yeah, I, I think, all things considered, I like living in a place where it rains.
Yeah, I was, I was there, I was evacuated.
Oh, God.
Visiting my son and his family.
Were you in the Tahoe area or another?
South Lake Tahoe.
Yep.
Oh, that's scary.
Yeah, between that and the other, what, ten years ago, when they had a grizzly bear knock down their door and tear apart all their stuff. They were away, you know, pass, I'm, I'm good with Connecticut, thanks.
Do we have anybody that, for public speak, I don't see anybody, is everything good there? We're good with that.
I think we're down to, who you see.
As always, I want to thank everybody for all your participation, I think we all bring good things to the table and everybody has good opinions, so. Keep them coming, um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.
For stepping in as usual.